I don't have that, too. Well, we use all of these apps with everything. It's still happening. Whatever it is, it's happening.
Pretty good.
But I will say.
I know I'm so no carefree, but I never, I won't be able to see it.
See all of them.
And maybe, but they're, maybe they're. I mean, I was about to. So it's like maybe you're always going to miss it.
Sure. That's the future. It's always been. I love going up to here. I just got married.
I would ship it my.
About that.
Seriously, you don't need to that, that is, that is. So help me.
You know.
You just can't say one. Yeah, fourteen stories. How did it get done?
Right, quite as you. But in that sense, I also. Well, you can accept.
This is. Four. Well. So. Three or four, you know. An hour. The right. Here we go. Five. I'm gonna. The only. Why? That's what I'm gonna go with. I don't know. Do that again. Just so I understand. Who can, who can be.
Just wanna make sure that.
Everybody can be.
We're gonna talk about this tomorrow. We'll try to figure out. If so.
About what? Yeah, I saw that. Oh, yeah. No. Yeah. I saw it. I was bringing up the one of the meetings that I told. You don't know. See, it's all there. So you track that all down. The capsules. If you're on River Cross Street. We did that. I already did. I already did. Can we just come? Yeah. Originally, we were, we're keeping these. We're keeping them. It's why you push a fire and. They actually know some. Not everything.
So you do, you do a great job.
You study. Like this. There's no way.
I'm staring at her.
You call the fire that's all over here. So we got them. Yeah, we saw them. So I didn't manage. Much hair. Yeah. Is Kevin, is he okay?
You're good, man.
No, he doesn't. No, he doesn't. Weezy's in the chat.
Sorry. We have enough people.
Yeah. Who's your wife last time?
I'm.
Six? Yeah. A work for ease of interest? Hopefully not.
Yeah, you have work that's in seven years.
I know.
I'll tell you. Crank it up in a minute. You good? Good evening, everybody. Please stand for a few minutes. We see Wright still do that.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh. That's where. Good evening, everybody. He wants to bring this meeting is called to order. Borough Seabright, compliance with the open public meeting act has provided adequate notice of the time, date, and location of this meeting to the Esberry Park Press, Link News, on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, filed notice with the Borough Clerk and posted notice on the Borough Office and the Borough Website. This meeting is open to the public, and we're happy to have you all here. Especially the captain in the back. We always love having you here. I could, I could go way further, you know, captain in the back, some rooftop, taking the scene with the gas leak, but that's just me. We all know who it happens. Welcome.
Councilman Bieber, Ms. Bills. Yeah, Mr. Cashmore.
Here.
Chairman Cunningham.
Here.
Vice Chairman DeSao.
Yeah.
Ms. Lorman. Mayor Kelly. Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. Laxton.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Julia.
Nice to see you, Frank. Okay, I think I'm on the right page today.
Yeah.
Now, you know, because I've mixed up so many pages. Approval of the eleventh of October minutes, ten, eleven, twenty-two minutes. Discussion.
Second.
Oh, second, okay. All, all approved?
Yes.
Yeah, two. We need to go down minutes. If, if, if there's issue, we do. New application. Kim Kirkowski and Carrie Huffman. I believe that's who's sitting before us right now, and thank you for coming. Thirteen Church Street, block fourteen, lot eight. Welcome.
Thank you.
So just with the record reflect, that notice is appropriate. So we can take jurisdiction of the application.
Well, thank you. My name's Carrie Huffman. My wife Kim was here, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and Kirkowski, that's her last name, I'm Carrie Huffman.
Mr. Huffman, if you just don't mind, but quickly, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for purposes of this application, sir?
I do.
Thank you. And would you spell your last name for the record?
It's Huffman, H U F F M A N.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kim's traveling. She works for Berkshire Hathaway. She runs the lending division for the real estate company, so she's in the Midwest this week. So I'm, I'm here to kind of represent both of us and tell you a little bit about who we are, what our plans are, and hopefully what we can try to accomplish. Like I said, my name's Carrie Huffman. I work for the Pittsburgh Penguins of the National Hockey League. I run their scouting department, so if there's any New Jersey Devil fans or Ranger fans, I'm sorry, I apologize, but. Our main residence is in Doylestown, Pennsylvania. We bought this property here on Church Street in March. We had been looking for over two years at properties down here, and we finally found one that we loved, and the location was great. Our intention is to eventually move down here and retire. We're probably both only gonna work for a couple more years. And upon getting down here, we realized how much we love the area and realized that we needed to do some things to the property to make it our full-time residence, and like I said, eventually retire here and have our kids and our, hopefully our grandkids at some point enjoy the property as well. So in shifting to the property, I think, you know, one of the things we realized once we got into it and started to use it quite ahead of the summer, the roof is, is, we can't get insurance through our insurance company through, including the roof. So between that and the seven-foot ceilings on the second floor, we're all kind of tall people, and our kids are very tall. The back deck, we have an issue in terms of, there's no doorway with the back deck on the second floor. We have to crawl out a window to use the back deck. The stairs are very steep and narrow and dangerous in terms of going from the second floor to the first floor. So there's a lot of things that, that we recognize if this is gonna be our house in the future that we have to address and, and look into. The house was raised after Sandy, but it wasn't raised enough to provide parking, which obviously is a challenge down here. So our goal is, is to redo the property, to raise it, to be able to have adequate parking spaces for us and, and create a property that's gonna be good for us for the rest of our lives and our, and our kids' lives. So with that, we, we contacted Tony and Kevin, and we talked to a builder that we wanna use, a local builder, J D Taylor, who's done properties through this area, and we sort of talked about what we think could be done. We know we're looking for some variances and, and need some things to happen to kind of build and conform to the rest of the properties that are already in construction on, on the street. And basically, that's it. We're, I'll turn it over for the specifics. Again, I'm a hockey guy, not a, not a builder guy, so our architect will, will handle it from here on out. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
I think we need to swear. Definitely need to swear here.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for purposes of this application?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state your name and credentials for the record?
Anthony Conduris, C O N D O U R I S. My office is twenty Bigam Avenue. I've licensed architect in St. New Jersey since nineteen ninety-six.
Anthony has testified before this board many times before. I think there's no reason to go through his credentials. Thank you for coming.
Okay, I'll just run through a plan here again and talk about some of the variances. So as Mr. Huffman said, originally, you were thinking this, thinking about this being an addition, you're gonna raise it and then make addition and then put it, put the third, put the third level on. So at some point, you not working to achieve that, it just makes more sense to take it down and start, start from fresh. But the intent is to keep the exact same foundation or the exact same footprint. So what, so the house will come down to the foundation level. We're gonna add enough block to bring it up to, to allow parking underneath. And many of the variances are not conforming as that are being caused by it being existing. I'm sorry.
Do you get them?
No, I do not, thank you. So many of the variances are, are because of the fact that it's an existing foundation, it's already not conforming. So we have full minimum lot area, minimum lot footage. They don't comply now. There's no real opportunity to buy any other property around the house, so those are two non-conforming that will not change. The front setback is going to remain where it is now, two-point-five feet today, and will be two-point-five feet with the new house as well. Minimum front setback, excuse me, side setback, again, the foundation is sitting where it is, so we have a pretty small setback on the east side, and we have two-point-six-four feet on the west side. So that's gonna stay the same. Then building height, that's, that's one of the new variances, and not only is it the height, but it's the, the number of stories. So third floor does not qualify as a half-story because it has too much space according to definition.
The volume.
Excuse me?
The volume?
Well, the amount of, the amount of square footage is on the.
Square footage?
Yeah. Now, the height that we noticed for was, is thirty-nine feet. But I will say that that thirty-nine feet is only this little section here, which is a stair tower and a, and an elevator shaft. If that one there, the height would be thirty-seven and a half feet. So just to repeat, thirty-nine feet is only this little section here. And this house is proportioned much the way of.
Is it, may I ask, is it more than the elevator shaft area?
It's the elevator shaft area and, and stair, and stairway going up. Heaven for the stairway.
Well, that's the only part that's thirty-nine feet.
That's correct.
Right, yeah. Will qualify as a third floor. The middle is about two square foot of the third floor.
It's, what was that? I'm sorry.
But there's a room around, right? Yeah, I think that's what Lance is asking, so.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not, it's, yeah, there's, there's a bedroom on that level as well. But that was all those sections.
At the same height?
No, at, at the thirty-seven point five.
Okay.
Because Seabright takes the height from the ridge to the, to the underside.
Right, right, right.
Right, so that's why it's different. It's different for the rest of the, for the rest of the.
It's all the same height, it's calculated differently?
That's correct, yes, same, same ridge height.
You're right. Well, because the calculation wants thirty-nine, one's thirty-seven.
Yes, that, that's it, yes. So this, this is actually, as an illustration, this is the front. If you're looking, this is the east side of the house, so this is the front of the house, and you'll see, even though we're up at three stories, we did set the third floor back really twice, because we have the, the balconies in the front, and then we have another balcony on the top. So the, the front of the house, where it's, where it's high, is set back about twelve feet from the street. So it's, you can even see on these three-D drawings that, you know, that's, that's the roof of the, where the third floor is, and it's set back pretty far off the street, so it's not looming over the street. And this is a very consistent look for a lot of houses that are being put up right now, a lot of the new houses. You know, many of them are two and a half stories, and they, they look very similar, so it's not a detriment to the neighborhood. It's pretty consistent with what's happening, and I'm sure a lot of our houses might start looking like this. I think we might be gonna raise them, so. Another thing that we did, which is not on your plans, is we decided that it doesn't really matter if we keep the existing foundation in this back area where there's some piers. So if we take those out and just run the foundation around a perimeter, we pick up room for one more car under the house. So now we, now we're providing two parking spaces, and that was one of the comments of the, Mr. Hoover's letter. So two parking spaces under, in the garage.
And you did that by filling in an area that's currently on piers right now?
That's correct, yes. Because originally, it was an addition, and we weren't really thinking of changing any of the foundations, but now that we're gonna clear span it with new framing, it doesn't matter, so we're just gonna square that off, make it, make it two parking. The last variance is building coverage, and it was already over at fifty-six-point-four. We're just bringing it to fifty-six-point-nine-eight, so very slight increase in building coverage. It is not conforming, but we didn't really add too much to its center. And that's it. Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sure we will.
The neighboring house, for example, is already raised. What is the height of your house versus the house next door?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't measure that.
Towards, towards the river or towards the ground? No, I, I.
As the power line. Amazing how that works, isn't it?
It's raised, but I don't know what the, what. Okay, it's taller than the house is now with their height. So it's taller than the house is currently. I'm curious whether, when you raise this and when this new house, are you gonna be above that?
Oh, you mean the house next door is taller than?
The current house.
The current house on, on his property.
So I'm curious whether, once you build this new house, are you gonna be above that?
Right, unfortunately, I don't have the information right now.
But that's important to me, I can tell you.
One of, one of the problems I ever confronted with is the narrowness of our lot, obviously.
I understand.
So it changed the formula for the height to the roof. If this had been a full-size house, fifty-foot lot or a thirty-foot lot, whatever, this is a full-size lot, that roof line would conform.
The thirty-seven point five.
Yeah, so the only reason it's not conforming is because that property is narrow and the formula is different, so.
Well, it's the same with everything, everything else on the street. Everything else conforms to that. Nothing, nothing conforms downtown, I know that, but, but yeah.
The houses on their street are a little older, though.
Right, I agree.
I think, I think they're eventually.
I agree.
They'll take them over, they're gonna do the same thing in system. I'm just trying to explain to you as far as the total height of the, of the roof line, which everybody is concerned.
I'm not sure if I have a house.
Most of the new, most of the new roof lines that we are moving in town are thirty-seven forty-two. So it doesn't really exceed.
So I don't disagree.
Yeah, no, I'm. Yeah, I'm not sure if you actually tell that there's the difference.
You're talking about this house here.
Talking about, yeah, that house there.
Well, this, this is thirteen, right, the White House? The thirteen? You know, we probably, we probably shouldn't talk a lot about a picture that you're sharing, unless you wanna leave your iPad here.
Oh, Rowan Wright.
It just, being fair to Dave, so he didn't believe his iPad picture.
Sorry, this is the house in, this is the current house. And I'm referring to the photographs I were working on.
Okay. There's some problems.
It's, it's. It's gonna be tall. I'm not gonna, that's what I'm concerned about. I mean, are we gonna? I'll be very concerned about it, but I think the house is too tall, and that's what my concern is.
Next, next to the neighborhood?
In comparison to the neighborhood, yes. There are some houses across the street that are newer, that are much higher than what's next to them.
We didn't need any of it, but I have no right to open this board granting any of the use variances for height on that street.
On the downtown, not many, but let me ask, how many of the houses have been raised?
Once across the street or?
Next to you, across the street, in the neighborhood?
Across the street and to the left have all gone to the, they're pretty high, like, I don't have the exact.
Yeah.
But they're.
Does the house next door raise with, with parking underneath?
It is.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Frank, do you remember the height of the house that, that in the, in the neighborhood where you had the jackings up?
That was about forty, it's hard to know.
But that was a little higher, that was a little taller, right?
But they had no height variance.
Correct. Because of the design of the roof.
Right.
But in order to get a stairwell under construction, to get a stairwell up to the top floor, unless it's in the middle of the house, you would need to create a resort. And I, and I see that on theirs, and I.
If you showed them the floor.
I certainly understand the difference between that one small section which picks the thirty-nine. My calculation, and look, the ridge top is really what people look at at this, at the end of the day, and, you know, I, I certainly, I, I don't have as much of a problem with the height as I do with three stories, to be perfectly honest.
But I don't need the three stories. They want the three stories.
They want the three stories.
Or, I guess I'd want three stories too, but.
Yes.
It doesn't need to be, I mean, the, the height's being created by the fact that you want three stories, it's not being created by the fact that those aren't tall.
More, you mean the variance? It's being created by.
The height, the height which is creating variance is being created by the fact that they want the three stories.
Correct. But if they did a half-story there, the roof line would be the same.
Correct.
The ridge, the ridge height would be the same.
So it's, we're not gaining any.
Not gaining or losing, it's your say.
Well, they, they can legally do a two-and-a-half-story house under our code and not need a variance, but the roof line is ending up the same height, even though we're calling it a three-story.
But they, they still need a height.
Correct, no, I'm just, I'm just.
So, so it's the volume under the roof that is created a third story, is changing the third, to a third story.
Yeah.
But the height variance regardless, if they have two halves, it would be correct.
Even if they hold back the third story to make it a two-and-a-half, then they still need a roof.
What I would say, though, if, for instance, if you actually look at that and, and the, the thing that puts it over fifty percent, and, you know, okay, thirty is, is kind of tight, and so when I give the kind of math to it, if you eliminated the dam in the front, you would get under fifty percent, and you would pull that roof line back off the street another seven or eight feet, which I think helps from the visual look of.
Talking about getting. We have to be careful what we tell people.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying that to clarify.
Frank, I have no problem with what you just said.
Clarify in terms of, you know, because some of that is perception, you know, when you look at a house, some look taller than others because of how close that is to the front we're, we're treating, right?
As a board, though, we, we don't tell.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that, you know, to me, that the height may not be that, you know, detrimental.
Okay, well.
I, I personally don't think that three stories is appropriate. When I walk down the street, I don't see anything that's three stories on that street at all.
Not, not on the other side of the street?
No. And I don't think that the, that this board has approved.
We're not professionals to decide that, but I agree with what you're saying.
I don't know that we've approved that's three stories on that street.
I don't know that we approved anything either. And so one of the five variances here, the only one that we're really concerned about discussing is the building height. Does anybody have any? Height and three stories. Yeah, the other, right, and three stories, but the other, the other variances that are being requested are already existing, except it went from fifty-six-point-four percent to fifty-six-point-ninety-eight percent. I mean, it's a minor change on the actual building coverage. The other variances are, are existing already, so it's really just the height has changed.
Yes.
Okay.
It's not the height of the story.
It's the height of the three stories.
Right.
What, how much would you have to reduce that three-story to make it two-and-a-half stories?
No.
The square footage.
That's not gonna change the height.
No, it won't change the height. It's saying that when you do your jackings, it's the fact that.
It's still a two-and-a-half story. Yeah.
It's gonna be two-and-a-half story, guys. Break it out like I did here.
You know, Frank, if you look at that picture, the, what they're calling the third story is step back a little. No, it's definitely a step back.
Yeah, it's gotta be each floor. Yeah, second step back and third step back.
The ass story is, is two feet above the floor for those wall plates before it starts creating the roof.
Right.
If you have to take, uh, quite a bit of surface, you know, like a hundred ninety-five square feet.
How much is the third floor now?
It's four-thirty-eight. Well, what's, what's the wall plate that's on the side? Where is that on the? It's a six, it's pretty low, it's a. Because two feet is what the ordinance requires as a two-story, as as a two-and-a-half story. Right. So if you, if, what if you just load it, load those plates and make it cheaper roof? Right, it's still. I'm not suggesting.
We, we.
We never. Right, the elevator. We still have a problem with the elevator, but yeah, I have to look at how that would work with, you know, what it takes away your ceiling. Not with two-and-a-half story, that's all.
But the elevator space is not, is not a part of the space, are they talking?
No, it's, right, right. But physically, I saw some of you there. Yes.
If you just lost the front dam, you'd get below fifty percent.
Yes. Right.
I don't, I personally don't object to the house as it's designed and, and the three stories, they're gonna be building, you know, smaller homes along the waterfront downtown. It's gonna become the norm.
If you look at the other streets, they're all already up there.
That's what I'm saying, it's gonna become the norm in that area. I personally don't object to that. You, you think that whole area, the half of it's already up? Right, and when they do the new houses as part of that new development down there. I mean, that's down on the waterfront. Yeah, they're all gonna be, I think they had something forty feet or something forty feet.
The couple of, or the fifty, about the fifty.
Yeah, they're, they're all gonna be large, it's just gonna become the norm. No, the down, on the waterfront. On the waterfront, right. But there's still, these are still in the neighborhood. That's my, my opinion, I, I think it's important to respect the neighbors.
Tony, open up the, the stock floor plan again. There are any, if they eliminate, if they.
Might be.
That's the.
Yeah, we did, okay, you could, you'll, square footage wise, I don't think.
It'll take about eight to hear a few of them, but yeah, it won't change the height. It still won't be an absentee, it still won't be an absentee.
But visually from the street, it would be less noticeable, the height would be less noticeable, because it would sit further.
Right, well, it does already sit back, but it would go even farther.
Like I pointed out before, the houses that are west of this one here, most of them are older homes. And I think if people acquire them, they're gonna renovate them, and we're gonna see this.
Just the kind of what we're gonna do.
Application's gonna be for.
Prove every one of them.
Well, we can't, we can't base a decision tonight on what we think might happen in.
No, but on the argument that it doesn't conform with the existing homes, I think those existing homes are gonna become the new home. They're not all, some of those have been renovated.
Yeah, most of them are raised.
No, we have to be careful dreaming about the future, we have to, we have to deal with this application. That's before us, and I think it's very important for me to say that right there. Not about what other people are gonna do down there.
No, but on the planning aspect, there's our vision of what the town's gonna look like eventually.
Yeah, but we don't get to make that.
Okay, I'm just telling you that, you know, the council sets what the height of the people are, we just don't do that.
I'm not disagreeing with you, Dave. I actually am agreeing with you, but we can only do what will happen as a board.
Mr. Chairman, while everybody's thinking about this, can I go through a couple of boring things in my letter?
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, okay, so, he took care of the idea of the two spaces, now they have two spaces as per RSI, so that's fine. They're gonna be putting a garage in the front, so they're gonna have to create an apron.
Yes.
So they'll have to be, they'll have to be couch and bonding for the apron and the curb from the front. So that's something that is in my letter. And, any sidewalk can be put, noted in the plan, it says in my letter, any sidewalk or curb that's outside of that that's appropriate by the state or whatever should be replaced.
Right.
Okay, and corners and leaders should go to the front of the building. Now, what are you doing with the fences that are there?
The fences are going to stay. The neighbor actually requested that they keep the fences, so you have to.
Not remove and replace, no.
During the construction, he asked, are they gonna stay, and I was like, yeah, absolutely, I talked to the builder and he said, yeah, it's not an issue.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, you're satisfied?
Yeah, there's nothing else. Except for the height and the, and then Frank's comment about the block coverage. Building coverage.
Block coverage, then downtown is always an issue.
They're not calling over block coverage.
I don't know, not according to coverage.
Slightly increased from existing.
Point four, point five?
Yeah, it's not an issue.
Point zero five.
Additional testimony?
Well, we're hearing what everybody's saying here, and I know some of you are concerned that.
No, there's always conversation, of course.
Yeah, right, of course, so, you know, it's a, I guess it comes to down to the question of, would it make sense to go for a vote at this point, or, I think there's only six board members.
It is a D variance, do we need any additional testimony as far as?
Well, I did speak to her, she feels it's a technical D variance, so she offers no opinion or comment on it, has no issue with the testimony presented.
But Monica, there's no reason for, you don't need to prove a special reason.
No.
A special reason, that's what I was just asking.
She takes on sessions.
Can I have, like, literally like one minute with them, and I'm right back?
Of course you can, Anthony. Let's, let the record show, the board is on a break.
Yeah, please don't discuss the application while we're off, I appreciate it, thank you.
Damn, Dave, you can't help yourself, can you?
No, but a lot of things I say are.
The things you say are wonderful, Dave.
I try to make you understand that if you don't understand, not everybody is in construction mode.
No, no, I get what you're saying.
Do we open into the public before?
I'm sure, let's just.
Absolutely, we have to open into the public. No, I understand, but, you know, the bar is wide, let's open into the public, you know, we can. I don't know if you want to do that or not, but.
Why don't I just go to the men's room since we're on break?
Does it bother anybody? It's all part of the same room.
Here, and this is some new fancy place.
Yep. There's a bad sort of little window here, we're holding you guys in once, but maybe you can just go, or let me show my wife, because like, where you go, you know, plenty of more meetings, and watch the other show.
Why do you think you used to be the sheriff of this town? Peggy, you know.
You walked some. And you were chairman of the board?
Watched.
That's fun. So I got to know some, right?
All right.
I mean, it's what it is, so.
Yeah, yeah.
First, I lived in Riverdale down here, by the old K. By my own.
Oh, okay.
With a fireplace in the hall?
I lived in, um, rural plaza in Milltown, here in the fireplace, and I would be down there, sit on the deck and, uh, have a.
I am, I am as well, I apologize.
It's okay.
Well, I could have stayed.
Can you give a roll call, take a wave, or spread it this? Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Can I do a roll call, say here? Oh, here. Yeah, back on.
Nobody left.
Mr. Cashmore?
Here.
I'm back.
Vice Chairman of Salem?
Yes, I'm still here.
Mr. Lawrence? Mr. Lexby?
Here.
Is that it?
That's it. That's all.
Okay, so.
You had a moment.
Yes, I had a moment, so it looks like, you know, there's some concerns about, you know, what we can do about the height, or at least maybe the number of stories, or some sort of refinement to this project, so I think it's, you know, I think it's probably smart for us to maybe go back and try to see what we can do about doing some sort of, either lowering of it or reducing it somehow.
Would you like to adjourn this matter for another date, so that you can come back at an appropriate time just in case, or are you going to resubmit if necessary? You tell me.
Or do you want to do it right now?
Do what?
Oh, no.
Mr. Chairman, if he can come up with a simple solution that's easily recognizable during compliance, he doesn't have to come back to another meeting.
Oh, okay.
Well, right, he can withdraw, but he can adjourn now in case he can't, and he wouldn't have to renotice and pay for it.
That's true, the only problem you're going to have, Peggy, when are you, are you here after tonight?
I'm not here the twenty-second.
But that's all that you're missing?
That's all we got.
Okay, and I always say that because.
November twenty-second is our next meeting.
Right, November twenty-second, but you'll be here after December meeting? Okay. Well, it is December why?
Fifteen.
December thirteen, so you would want to enter next date if you're coming back.
If we're coming back, yes, so, but I mean, well, there is one, if there is some chance of us maybe just telling them tonight, we did discuss the idea of removing that front, we call it a den. So, the homeowner has no issue with removing this front section, which would knock it out eight square feet off.
Sure, nobody would have a problem with hushing this out for five minutes right now.
And would you be?
Why don't you suggest what you guys talked about, and this board is a very open board, I know it's not the right thing to do, come on, it's not.
Frank, listen.
It's crack me.
So, let me just say.
This is Seabridge, we love our people, we love our homeowners, we hope they're our neighbors, this is what we do.
Okay, so, if you have a design in mind, if that's what you want to step back, we can certainly amend on the record for that particular purpose, however, if the adjourn intent to redesign, then I would suggest we adjourn, and you could come back, because number one, you may not have to come back if you redesign and it's an appropriate design that would fit under the requirements, you don't need bolts, I don't know, you might just want to stay on record for bolts.
Yeah, no, we could never get it to the.
It all depends on what, yeah, what the two of you talked about, and if that's, you know, if you want to amend on the record to remove that and go for a quote-unquote two-and-a-half or just a height variance, that's okay too.
Well, removing this will not make it, will not make it to.
So it won't make it, okay.
But it'll set it back even more.
It'll bring it lower to fifty percent.
It'll break the coverage.
Yes.
Yeah, it'll break the coverage.
Yes, just below fifty.
And, do you have a number yet?
With the new square footage?
You still have to get a file of votes, so.
That's correct.
Right. There's some value to it.
You can probably ask me for some cards. I'm gonna have to get my scale too.
What we're paying.
Trade.
Good man.
Agreed.
He wears a suit jacket every night, now, remember we criticized him?
Oh, I never criticized him, Dave. Look at me and my work clothes today. My apologies.
I put my fancy jeans in my.
That was, that was too odd.
We should watch the great. Always a crucial of your kind.
Oh, so actually, no, that would take.
Especially if you ask.
So it's bigger, it's a hundred and forty square feet, so we should.
No, actually it's not, because you can only count from the seventeen.
I remember that place.
So it would take, it would take seventy.
I was trying to read your, your phone.
Yeah, that's the whole footer, but actually, you can only count the dotted line, the dotted line, that's actually actually using space.
Just closer to eighty.
Yeah, it was so far. Four, it was weird.
Pretty much what it says, eleven by, it's eleven by eight feet, so, eight square feet, so if I subtract eight square feet from.
We'll just take eight square feet and divide it into the fifteen sixty. And that'll give you the reduction, right?
Uh, you totally confused me there, just eight divided by?
Fifteen sixty. That gives you a fifty point or two.
Zero, zero, point zero five six.
So it's five, so it's five point six percent less than what you have on the plan now, it's not enough, doesn't overall fit.
No, no. I mind it comes out of forty-eight percent. It goes to forty-eight percent based on my.
Yeah, if I take eighty off of four, let me see.
Well, he can just stiffen you, and then he has to make work.
I think the motivation of reducing that was to try to soften the look of the house on the street.
And get, and get.
But it's not gonna change the height at all.
No, height.
No, it's just.
No, I'm just saying that to make sure everybody remembers that.
That gets us below fifty percent.
Yes, it is below fifty percent.
Because the floor below is seven, seven twenty-nine, it reduces the top floor to three fifty, so it's a little less than fifty percent.
So, Mark, you agree with the height?
Yeah, I didn't care about building coverage, so.
You agree with the height?
No, I had it these two tall.
The ridge lines, what you were discussing.
Yeah, I think it's gonna jump, I'm just one person, but I think it's gonna jump above the neighboring house, and we just had these two tall. I didn't care about those.
I like it in its original form, I'd like to know if there's any objectives in the public.
We'll get to the public, we're still testing, we're still testing, what do you?
Yeah.
There is, there is some public here, so.
So, yes, we can remove that front section there.
We will always get to that.
But your proposal is to, is to get rid of the variances, pardon?
No, it does not.
Well, it doesn't get rid of the variance.
Not the height variance, the, the.
The half-story?
The block coverage.
Block coverage.
The maximum building coverage.
It won't, sorry.
So you know what, it's not, it wouldn't do it, because the story is lower.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
It just softens the look of it, makes it a little more small.
Wait, is there still maximum building coverage variance enough?
Yeah, there is.
Yes, yeah, there's.
There's still it, so what's it gonna be now? That doesn't change it.
It doesn't change.
Okay.
I was thinking, what will be standing rock a little fifty percent?
The third, the third, the third story.
Oh, the bottom.
Sixty percent to forty-eight percent.
Well, it will become to almost two and a half.
Right, right.
Fairly close to it.
Okay, fine.
And the height will never change, even if they brought it back to two and a half.
No, all right, it doesn't change my opinion, but I just understood what you got to talk about.
Okay, any other testimony? Your questions were answered, board members, by that change?
Yes.
If there's anybody who has a question from the board, please ask it now before I open to the public.
We can have a discussion after opening the public?
Yes, we can, but how about the opening of the public?
I thought you never say that.
Both of you are all.
I'm just trying to keep everybody calm and happy. Anybody in the public care to have a statement or ask a question about any of the testimony? Seems like there's two people here. Very nice that you're here, welcome. If there's no questions, public portion is now closed. And here we go. You have more discussion?
I'm, I'm.
Not just you, Dave, anybody, Mark, Dave?
I have to say my piece.
With the change that's been proposed, I would be up in the table.
Yeah, so would I, so.
I like the application as a larger remaining, if they're willing to make that.
Is that a motion?
I would make a motion to accept it. With the revised proposal, with the reduction of the, the reduction of the other four.
We're a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Phillips? Yes, Mr. Cashmore?
Yes.
Chairman Cunningham?
Yes.
Vice Chairman of Salem?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
And Mr. Lexby?
Yes.
No, it's all right, Mark. I like some of the changes, Mark.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, best of luck with your home.
Thanks very much.
It's hard to build them down in these side streets.
We love it, we appreciate it.
Do you need to?
Well, we welcome you here.
We can't wait to hear.
Yeah, it has a different coverage.
Nice to see you, Tony.
You too.
So, on to, I think that's it, and we have closing minutes, and then, next planning board meeting, eight twenty-two. What is that? November eighth.
So, everybody, November eighth date is, so the next planning board is canceled, the planning board.
Thanks, Tony.
On November twenty-second, because November eighth is the last day, we can't do it to make, so the meeting is moved to November twenty-second as will the public.
I'll be loving that.
Enjoy.
I hope I'm in the room.
I hope I'm alive.
And that's all, we can all have closed dates. Is there any other business before the board this evening?
Pause it, guys, welcome to each other.
Yes, sir, please, we have additional business, gentlemen and ladies. Please state your name for the record.
Jamie, Jamie McPhee, former Rutgers owner, and I'm gonna sign the project to come to the zone board meeting for one night classes.
Dave, you said Dave, right? Well, please, Jamie, no, I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't think we heard you, there was a lot of, I'd like you to start over if you don't mind, I apologize.
No, no, and I live on Rutgers, I'm a Rutgers, and I've been asked to, one night classes, to come to reserve a one meeting, and I've been told I've gotta ask a question. And so, I spend a lot of time in Seabridge, on the summer and stuff. My question is, do you have any update for the bridge, and when that might be moving, the new bridge being built?
The new bridge?
I know it's more than a year.
It's two and a half years from start to finish.
But it's twenty-five, right?
Frank actually probably knows more than this, although I read all this stuff. Frank actually probably knows more than this, although I read all this stuff.
Started six months ago, so, about three years from now.
But we have.
I'd say two and a half.
Now, I don't think you.
It'll take a year to get the whole steel out of it. Trying to go through in the book.
Frank, faster.
It's not built well.
I just needed a question.
So, 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 I, I, none of us are actually qualified to answer that question, except, we tried to, because we've all, we've all listened to their, their reports, I got a report today from the bridge, and said there's another big thing coming, and it came, it was.
I, I went to the kickoff meeting, the engineer group, and I went, it's.
I did, well, I don't think I was the one who.
No, this one, three of them.
I have a question for you, what's your major at Rutgers?
Eh, political science.
No, God bless you.
Law school.
Ah, God bless you. Happy to have you with us.
The one meeting you could have picked to go to, this is probably the more lively one that you would have asked for.
Is that right?
I've got, eh, don't you, Dave?
No.
No?
This is a quiet meeting. Well, we, we deal, we specifically deal with zoning and planning and law, and that's what we do. And we're very happy to have you here listening to us, and thank you for coming.
Yeah, at MCC AFF Audio.
Thanks.
And where do you, where do you come from?